Jessica Naxton Hebert.
Rob Shallow Hebert.
Stephanie Dan Caffey Inover.
Steve Cologne Hebert.
Sue Rappel Marlboro, Pat Long, today superintendent, Alex Disman, and Ray Gray. Charity Corlott of Warner. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the three mother, for which it stands. One nation, one God, in the just soul, liberty, and justice for all.
Are there any public comments tonight? Alright, so, item number four, new business presentation. Part of the insurance historian information, Brown and Brown. I'm thrilled to have Chuck here tonight from Brown and Brown, who works with our insurance consortium. And is really the wealth of information that helps us as a consortium to first of all, understand all the different aspects of the insurance, as well as looking at the eight entities and how we all work together. So Chuck, if you please, thank you.
Thank you. So my name is Chuck, I'm with Brown and Brown Insurance. We are the brokers for the Region Eight Consortium. We were hired in 2015, and back in 2015, the consortium was a fully insured, which is a pretty standard way to run business in the smaller group market. At your size with over 400 employees total, between the eight entities that you see up here, one of the things we were tasked with when we were first hired was to help the consortium make a switch over from being fully insured to being self-funded. Going from fully insured to self-funded is going to be a money saver in the long run. In any given year, you run the risk that it may be a little more expensive, but over the long term, large groups are all going to be better off if they're self-funded, because there's certain costs in a fully insured environment that you don't have when you're self-funded. State taxes are something that you pay very minimally now, when you're fully insured, you pay a lot of state tax. The carrier profit, whoever your insurance carrier is, is going to build a lot of protection, a lot of margin into their numbers. When you're self-funded, you don't have to worry about that. You're really just banking on what are our claims going to be, and what's our protection on those claims. So in 2017, after two years of work on our end, and I think several years of work before we had even entered the picture, we did lots of meetings all over the region. I know I did a couple myself at the high school, with members from all the various boards, from all three towns. They came and the decision was made that this was the right move for the consortium. So the switch was flipped, if you will, on July 1st, 2017. So that means we're about two and a half years into the self-funded term for the consortium here. And through two and a half years, it's been an excellent move. Everything has worked pretty much exactly as planned. So, I just wanted to give a little bit of background for those who aren't familiar with self-insurance, and how the numbers come about when we look at renewals each year. So, as I said upfront, there is some risk when you become self-funded. If your claims run poorly in any given year, your cost could be greater. But you have certain protections that you pay for, and those are the fixed cost components that help you protect. So stop-loss insurance is a major component of that. There's two types of stop-loss that the consortium purchases. The most important is the one listed on the bottom, that's individual stop-loss. That protects you against having any catastrophic claimant, right? So at any given time, if somebody were to develop a severe case of cancer, or premature twins are born, there's all kinds of stuff out there that could easily be a $500,000 or a million dollar claimant. By purchasing individual stop-loss, that's you making a deal with the insurance carrier that says, "We're going to pay you a predetermined amount each month, and our liability stops on every human being on our plan at $150,000." So if you had a million dollar claimant, the consortium would only be responsible for $150,000 of that, and Anthem would take on the $850,000 beyond that. The number, the mentioned above on top, aggregate stop-loss, that's protection on your claims as a whole. So if the consortium's claims are estimated to be $7 million for the year, the most you guys could be on the hook for is 7 million, plus another 15% of that. Anything that, if you had, again, a catastrophic year, where everyone in the district got the coronavirus to be timely, and your claims spiked to 10 million that year, you'd only be responsible for about 8 million of that. Your 7 million, plus your 15%. When we made the switch, one of the things we wanted to make sure was the case was that employees were not losing benefits. What we do at Brown and Brown, we have a whole group, where all we do is health insurance for towns and schools. So we understand union environment, and the needs in a collectively bargained situation. So in this case, when Region Eight made the change, you stayed with Anthem. Didn't matter whether you were fully insured or self-funded, it's the same network of doctors, same physician choice, same hospital choice, benefits are the same, same copays and deductibles. The decision was made to continue to cover all state mandates. That's one thing that can differ between a self-funded plan and a fully insured plan. Fully insured plans are required by law to cover every mandate handed out by the state. Self-funded plans can choose not to cover certain state mandates. But in order to make things good for the unions, and they would sign off on the change, the Region Eight Consortium agreed to continue to keep acting all state mandates. So all the coverage is the same, and are, the only difference is, the actual, at the end of the day, instead of paying premiums to Anthem and them paying the claims, the consortium is now responsible for your own claims. So how does it work here in Region Eight? Your actual members, the teachers, the custodians, the police and fire, anybody that works in any of the things, they don't notice any difference. The plan functions exactly the same for them, day to day. Everything stayed with Anthem, there was no concern about a carrier change, which means I don't have to look and see if my doctors are still in-network, none of that changed. All the benefit levels the same, and everything locally is still governed by your own contracts. So who are the players that participate in this overall consortium? Obviously, first and foremost, are the three towns, as well as AHM Youth Services. Between that, there's eight total entities. Anthem is the administrator of the plan. You rent their network, they adjudicate your claims, and they're also the stop-loss provider. Brown and Brown, that's us, we are the broker, consultant. We help coordinate things. We do everything from day-to-day member issues. If someone goes to the doctor and their claim's not getting paid right, they can come to us and we'll help get that straightened out, all the way up through calculating the renewal each year, and making sure you guys are putting the proper amount of money away. An audit firm, the consortium did this for the first time last year, hired a firm to go back and look at all the finances from the first year on the plan. And then Spring Group is a third-party administrator. So, the way that, on a day-to-day, the way that this plan functions for everybody, Anthem has all the claims and headcount information for all the entities on the plan. Spring Group is a third-party company that the consortium contracts with, and Spring Group gets that data from Anthem, puts it into an easily digestible format for each entity, and essentially sends each entity a bill every month. So if anybody here is familiar with how self-funding works in other places, let's say it was only Ram, right, and we weren't talking about all the other entities. In any given year, the claims could spike, and Ram would owe more money than you expected to owe. The way that it works in Region Eight is, we have it normalized across all the groups. So it actually looks and functions on a day-to-day basis, as if you were still fully insured. But instead of Anthem sending you a bill saying, "Okay, you owe $300,000 this month", and cutting a check to Anthem for $300,000, Spring Group sends a bill and says, "You owe $300,000 this month." But instead of cutting that check to Anthem, Ram cuts that check to the joint account of all of the entities, that all eight entities own together. So that money stays locally. So you can see on the next slide, how the joint works. So these are the eight entities involved. Each one of them gets a bill from Spring Group each month, and that bill, again, looks and acts as if you were still fully insured. It's based on the number of people on your plan. Different types of plans have different rates. So if one group has a higher deductible, high deductible health plan, their rates would be lower than another group, whose plans are a little bit richer. Everybody gets their monthly invoices from Spring, and everybody pays them into the combined joint account. So it still functions as if you're fully insured. No group runs the additional risk of, "Oh, what if we have a bad year?" You're in it together, kind of like the Three Musketeers, all for one, one for all, working together. When this was all set up, there were several legal documents put in place. There was a consortium agreement. Now, there was already a consortium agreement amongst all the entities for the Region Eight. It was just modified to account for the self-funding, instead of being fully insured. Trust agreement was created, that governs that joint bank account, so everybody knows how that works. And then a banking agreement, the consortium partnered with Webster Bank, so that's where the joint account is located. Direct with the carrier, you have a separate ASO, or Administrative Services Only, agreement with Anthem, and a stop-loss agreement with Anthem, so those documents govern that. Alright, so here are we, here we are, two and a half years into this. And you can see in the first bullet point, there is a joint bank operating account balance. That's the main account, that all the entities share together. As of December 31st, that account had $1.1 million in it. There is also a separate investment account, where money is moved to a separate account that actually earns interest and could be invested. That's got $404,000 in it, that's a total of $1.5 million. Because of the way that this arrangement was designed, effectively, that one, if you had not made the move to self-funding, that $1.5 million would have just been sent to Anthem over the course of the last two and a half years. Instead, it is kept locally for Andover, Hebert, and Marlboro. So when we look toward next year, so this is all, all the slides here obviously are handed out, and then, and the font gets a little small as we look at it on the screen. The, this is the part that constitutes your fixed cost. So if we're looking at an overall bottom line next year of roughly $8.8 million, the fixed cost component of that is 900 and change, alright? So this year's fixed cost comes to $943,000. Next year's fixed cost, I can't even read this in the dark. 992. So each of the various components is broken out there. So you can see, in the renewal from Anthem, their administrative fee to run the plan has not changed. It's exactly the same. They have a managed benefits fee, that has not changed. The ISL is the individual stop-loss protection we spoke about before. Their initial renewal offer is only going up 7.5%. In the stop-loss market, it's actually a pretty low increase, certainly for an initial asset of renewal. We've got several more months before we lock down this renewal, we're certainly going to negotiate that down. The aggregate stop-loss only went up 4%. Pacoria is one of the few remaining ACA fees. So that's one of the fees, that's one of the type of fees that nor, under, the majority of the ACA fees being self-funded, you don't have to pay. Some of the others went away, they were voted out this year. This is a very small fee that's left in, that cost should be about the same for next year. The state taxes, so you only pay taxes on the part of your plan that is insured. So that $2 and change on the state taxes is what's applied toward the individual stop-loss and the aggregate stop-loss. Because those are the pieces of your plan that are actually insured. So you can see, you're only paying about $2 per person, per month in state taxes. If you were fully insured, instead of paying state taxes just on the stop-loss, you'd be paying state taxes on your entire $8 or $9 million in premium. B&amp;B Commission, that's our fee for the work that we do. The audit, that's how much was paid to the audit firm when they did their audit. Spring Group is the TPA. So all in, you can see the fixed fee component is slated to go up about 5.3% from last year, from this year to next year. And again, we expect to get some of those stop-loss numbers down a little bit before things are said and done. The bigger piece of the puzzle are the actual claims. Claims make up 85 to 90% of your overall spend. So every time one of your employees goes to the doctor, or they go to the hospital, or they pick up a prescription, they have their portion of that, whether they're in their deductible phase, or if they pay a copay toward that service. The remaining cost comes from the Region Eight Consortium. So all that money that's paid in month-to-month, where Spring Group sends bills out to each entity, and they pay it into the joint account, on a weekly basis, Anthem reaches into the joint account and takes out what they need to cover the claims. The rates are set for the groups, so that there will be enough money in that account at the end of the year to have covered all of your claims and fees over the course of the year. And obviously, with the money that's in the bank, things have worked really well over the last two and a half years. There's also a projection for dental, we keep that separate from medical and prescription. So it all adds up to the bottom line, current PE, premium equivalent. This year, all of the entities at Ram, when you add up how much they've paid through the first five months of the year, and you annualize that, this year's premium equivalent comes to $8.2 million. The analysis we've done on the claims, where we look and, and we trend them forward and figure out how much we think claims are going to be next year, comes to $8.8 million, which currently is a budget increase of 6.4%. Now, on top of that, there's other money that the consortium wants to make sure they have on hand. One is the number there called IBNR, that's incurred but not reported. If and when, Region Eight Consortium ever closes up shop and decides you no longer want to be self-funded. Let's say you did that this year, and you decided, come June 30th, we're going to close our self-funded doors, we're going to move somewhere else next year. There's still going to be claims, even after you end the plan, that need to be paid. People are going to go to the doctor in May and June, those claims don't get processed, and come due until July, August, September. Those are incurred before you left, not reported yet. So your auditors are going to want to make sure you have enough money on hand in that bank account, so that if and when you ever stop the self-funded process, you have money left. So if anybody has seen the audit report, and I believe it was handed out a couple months ago, this was a bone that we had to pick with the auditor, because the first-year report for the audit made it look like the plan was negative money. But that's only because they, auditors, wanted that IBNR to be booked after year one. And we knew at the consortium, that was never the plan. This was a multi-year process that was going to take some time to build money in the bank account. So if anybody looked at that audit report, they'd go, "Ah, you're down, you're negative $300,000 after year one." And we said, "No, we're actually more like positive $300,000 after year one, but we're halfway toward meeting that IBNR goal." Then the bottom line is a suggestion of reserve. That's kind of a, it's a twofold number. It's a rainy day fund, for that year when the claims do spike, so that you don't run out of money. And two, as that number climbs, and you have a comfortable amount of money in the account, that's money that can be borrowed against, toward a future year increase. So let's say, next year, the renewal projection is 8%. But no one wants to book 8%. Everybody says, "Hey, we've got taxpayers we need to answer too, we've got to get this renewal increase down." We'd rather see it at 5%. We're going to shave our renewal increase down, using that reserve money we have. That's the flexibility you have when you're self-funded. Being only the third year into it, it would certainly not be our suggestion to start using that money yet. But if things continue to run well, that's the flexibility you'll have in future years. So what are the key points on this? One, we're still going to continue to look at these numbers. You know, we're out here tonight, and as we presented these same numbers to the consortium last month, at a 6.4% increase. Last year, from the time we started, until the time that the consortium as a whole decided to lock in their renewal, our initial projection from where we ended did drop about 5%. So I would expect that 6.4 we're at now, to come down by the time things are said and done. As we look at those claims, so the other sheet that was handed out has claims data for the entire consortium going back several years. If you look at the, before the top breakout line, that was the end of the 17-18 year. The really key number to look at is under the column, about two-thirds of the way over to the right. Column's titled MLR, that stands for medical loss ratio. What we're doing there is comparing, how much did you guys pay in premium, versus how much did you have to pay out in claims? Ideally, you want that number to be in the range of 85%, that's kind of an industry norm. You can see that the end of that 17-18 year, things were running quite hot. Now that is part and parcel with, partly with having high deductible health plans. As your employees meet their deductible throughout the year, your claims get higher at the end of the year than they are at the beginning of the year. But by and large, you don't want numbers over 100%, that would mean you're losing money. You can see that the 18-19 year ran quite well, you were well underneath throughout the year. And then in June, things spiked up, but that's totally normal and to be expected. And obviously, at the beginning of this year, things are running well again. So what we do is, we take those numbers, and we analyze them and work them against industry trends. So Pat, if you just want to go back one slide. So that second bullet point, when we're taking your claims history, and we, we look back at two years of claims history, and we say, "Alright, we're using a medical trend of 10.5% and a pharmacy trend of 15%." When we're putting this projection together, that's us being quite conservative. Anthem, in the renewals they're putting out this year, they're using 9.6 and 12.4 respectively. So Anthem is saying, their own book of business, they would use about 9 and 12, we're using 10 and 15, as numbers we're projecting toward next year, because we don't want things to go south. We want to make sure you guys are comfortable with where the money's at. And being conservative is important. I'm sure you guys have seen in the paper, other towns and boards throughout the state, that either have not budgeted correctly, or had money in the bank, and then chose to take that money out and not use it toward insurance, or overuse it, in, when we were talking before about borrowing for the future year. So, you really want to be conservative, make sure you're not getting yourselves into trouble, and that's how you can succeed in the long run. Last couple notes here. The projected increase is based on plans staying exactly the same as today. So if your plans all were in place today, same exact plans tomorrow, that's where we have you at the 6.4. But we know there are some other contractual changes that will help bring your actual contract cost down. I believe the administrators' union has some plan changes coming this year. Them and other unions probably have cost shares increasing, maybe employees pay 18% this year, next year they're going to pay 19%. Things like that can help Ram's bottom line come down, even if we're saying, year to year, we expect the claims to be 6.4. And I know another question we haven't asked about was about looking at other carriers. At this point in time, looking at the market here in the state, Anthem's been in a phenomenal position. They brought in a new underwriting team over the last couple of years. And for their early renewal to be at a minus seven on the stop-loss, and to not raise the admin fees at all, is a very strong play on their part. And the other big change with Anthem this last year, for 7-1-19, they started their own pharmacy company called Ingenio. So that means they are controlling the rebates, they're controlling the discounts, and we've definitely seen through the first six months of claims across all our book of business, Anthem has performed a lot better than any of the other carriers in the public sector right now. So, we firmly believe that Anthem's the right partner for you guys to be with right now, for your ASO and your stop-loss. And as things progress, we do expect the renewal projection to go down. But that is how we have arrived at the numbers we are at today. Happy to answer any questions anybody has?
That was an awesome presentation, thank you for that. Do a lot smarter now. Right at the beginning, you talked about the transition from fully insured to self-funded. Is there a way to, at a high level, explain how it pays off over time? And even if it's not with specific numbers, we're 2.5 in, at five years, we might realize, again, using just conservatively. When would we realize the goodness, other than the fact that it was crystal clear that we're, it's all our money, and we're making, we're investing money versus just, it's like rent versus buy, sort of? So that's, that's my question.
I, I mean, I think the money in the bank is the, is the clear part of this, right? Because the very first year, 17-18, we did not play around with the numbers at all. Whatever your fully insured renewal that first year from Anthem was going to be, had you stayed fully insured, those are the numbers we set the rates at for that first year. So all the dollars paid out that first year were penny to penny what they would have had you guys been fully insured. The last two years, we used kind of a blend of our own underwriting, as well as Anthem produces as part of their renewal package every year, what they call an allocation rate, which is them saying, "Hey, we think, you being self-funded, if you charged these rates out for all your plans, you'd break even at the end of the year." Those rates are roughly 7 to 10% lower than fully insured rates. So Anthem doesn't do it anymore, but they used to, at the end of their renewal package, have an allocation rate section and a fully insured rate section. And you can see the difference, like I said, there's 7 to 10% difference. So over the last two years, you've been paying more in line with the Anthem allocation rates. Had you been fully insured, those numbers would have been 7 to 10% higher, and all that money would have gone to Anthem. So I know when we had sat in front of the boards, back in the spring of 2017, and presented all the numbers, one of the slides we had done at the time was, "Hey, let's do a four-year look back. Had you guys been self-funded with the rates we're getting quoted from Anthem today, and how your claims ran, how would things have looked?" And I think at the time, four-year savings was about $2 million. And we're two and a half in now, and it's 2.5, it's 1.5, so I think we're pretty much right on track for what that projection was.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a quick question historically, so since 2017, how much has it gone up each year?
So I know last year's final, I think, was a 7.2 renewal. I want to say the first year was about an 8, give or take. And again, we're, we're trying to build this bank account and be conservative to start, so that down the line, you can, you know, enjoy, like I said, we're at 6.4 now, and fully expect that to be low single digits by the time things are said and done here. You know, this is something that, when I stood up in front of the groups in, in the spring of 2017, I told everybody, "This is not a magic bullet." You know, sometimes people say, "Oh, we're going to self-fund it, we're going to slash the budget." And I said, "No, no, no, that's not the right mentality. If you're of this mentality, don't make this change. This is a long-term play." So we're still really kind of in the infant stages of this. You know, there's lots of towns and schools in Connecticut that have been self-funded for 20, 30 years. Now, that's what you're in it for. So, yeah, I'd, I'd say medium, single-digit increases the first couple of years, and, and now we're starting to see things shake out, where we can accommodate them all. Yep?
Well, yeah, just a question on that, on that bank account, in terms of the consortium, if, if there's many players in the group, so what happens, what has to happen to, you know, for someone to take that money and use it? Like, like you said, if you wanted to reduce the, the premium one year, the cost one year?
So every month, I meet with the consortium, and we update every single month throughout the entire year, we update on the claims. And then starting in November, depending on, because I think Hebert Board of Budget decided a little bit earlier than everybody else's. So they're usually looking for a projection in November, everybody else can kind of wait till December usually. And we start giving, "Okay, we're, you know, our early projection is nine, and the next one is eight, and then seven." And, so that would be a process that, through the course of those monthly meetings, talking with the consortium, would be a decision they have to make. Because, like I said, we used to start in November, December, and then come March, April, is when everybody's like, "Okay, this number's becoming real, this is what we're all going to agree, and we're going to finalize to set our rate action at for next year." If it were a bad year, and that projection were 10 or 11 or so, but we're talking two or three years from now, and the bank account's in a healthy place, that's where we would say, "Alright, now is the appropriate time. Book $300 of that, and take a couple points off of that renewal." And then know that, and because of the way it functions here, it would actually work quite easily. Instead of raising the rates 10%, the rates would only be raised 7. Everybody would still pay those rates into the joint account, because we know that the extra money's already there. So where there's no fear that Anthem's going to reach in someday, and there won't be the money for the claims. But that would be, yeah, that would be a joint consortium.
And who's the fiduciary on the, on the bank accounts?
So there are board members. I know Haley from town of Marlboro is the treasurer for the consortium at the whole. So she's the one who really looks at the account on a regular basis, and is keeping track on that. And Spring Group, they, they track it as well, because they want to make sure that the reports from Anthem, that say, "Hey, we're going to take pretty much out, but that actually matches what gets taken out the following week." So, but I, I'd say Haley from Marlboro is the one who's in charge of the bank.
And does the auditor look at the, the claims? Be sure that, that Anthem is accurately giving us the claims that are due, us and not somebody else?
So, that would be a more of a full-blown, line-by-line audit. And you can get the data on that, we haven't had any particular reason at this point to think that's necessary. It's been more of a high-level, we have all the weekly reports from Anthem, we know how much we're supposed to get taken out. Uh, it's been more of a high level, we have all the weekly reports from Anthem, we know how much we're supposed to get taken out. At the end of every year, uh, so fiscal year ends June thirtieth, you let three months go by and make sure all the rest of the claims are processed. And then in October, November timeframe, Anthem releases a year-end settlement letter that breaks everything down. You have this many admin fees, this much commission, this much stop loss, this much, uh, actual claims comes to your total. And then the auditors make sure that those line up and books and books. Thank you. Yeah.
No questions for me. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chuck. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Alright. Budget presentations, department coordinator.
Well, just tell me, that was such a good application. Mathematics? Yeah, spreadsheet. What's a representative? Spreadsheets. We just go to the next slide.
Yep, sorry. Scrap and head powerpoint.
That was a pretty picture though, wasn't it?
It was beautiful. We gotta go back to it one more time.
Okay. So we are in line with the strategic plan and especially goal one, uh, to actively engage students in different learning opportunities and to develop the skills and competencies, including critical thinking, problem solving, and motivation. So we have one additional course running this year, that's an SAT prep course. For students that we're targeting, who are kind of in the yellow, within one year of the goal or the, uh, benchmark on the PSAT. Uh, so we're going to be developing that course this year and teaching it next year. We're also continuing to put money towards our graphic calculators and other supplies. And we're providing students with other opportunities to experience math, including multiplayer options, which is at UConn for women going into engineering, science fields. There's STEM night at the Science Center. There's the MTA contest where students can compete. And that's also with some other students, uh, around the country. Financial reality, that's in the middle school. Uh, financial reality fair is for students to go to a community college or, it's one type of capital, to actually fill out a planning document and kind of plan what they would do and decisions they'd make. And it's really valuable, one, probably one of the most valuable learning opportunities for these kids to see what a budget actually is. And in fact, just because I have a job, I can do whatever I want. My car might result in me not having that money for food. Especially when they start out. Uh, we also provide bussing for math team and, uh, we can use for that. We support students through, you can see in there, there's a few software items for the middle school and high school, including NWA, Alex, and Helbert I O, as well as some infinite algebra, which is a worksheet generator for all the courses. For some successes, we, we have SAT results that are quite good. Uh, in fact, Scott Leslie and I were just at a Eastern Connecticut consortium meeting and we were noted as the exemplar of school and they, we were looking to get information of how we achieved what we did as far as the scores. How many schools, schools there, you think, twenty-five or something?
There are thirty, thirty-two.
Thirty-two schools there. We're, we're the top math-based school.
Right, refused to share anything though, so.
Wanted to keep this successful. I shared just enough. We have good AP results in all of our classes. We actually have AP calculus, AP statistics, calculus, A B F C, and P J pure science principles. We do that generally for this. And, uh, our general scores are, are good. We have good support for the kids and they generally have, seem to have good experiences in those courses. Uh, generally, students have fours and fives. We also support programs for our students. We have title math, middle school, that's like two sections of math. Uh, we have math for success in the high school level, two sections of math, just support students for second math class, both those are. And we have math lives every period in high school and after school, two things in middle school. Math team, uh, I consider that quite a big success story. We went from, I think, five students on math team a couple of years ago and now we have one fifty. In fact, I'm taking, we're going to a farthest school, which is Madison, no, further than that. Somewhere along the shoreline, I forget which school we're going to, but it's quite far, over an hour. And I have twenty-three students signed up to go for five official members, so I should be able to actually score. If anyone wants to, you can go. We have eighteen students going up for sure, just for the love of math. Those are our shirts. We're gonna order more of those this year. A little survey, that's that one again. I think it's rather fetching. Uh, we also, uh, have instituted some special support for our teachers. We've, uh, put in the budget, some NCTM National Council Teacher Math memberships, Atomic, uh, which is associated teacher of math in Connecticut. I'm on the board of that. And we go to the Atomic Conference and speak live in the year. And next year, uh, Atomic, we're hosting the national, the, uh, at the Associate Teacher Math Committee Conference for all of the partners. Yeah, I think I've got that. Any questions?
Start with you, Chuck.
My first every time tonight. Alright. Uh, I'm excited to hear about the SAT prep course for twenty twenty-one. And you mentioned something about a yellow banner. Obviously, I think you're targeting kids who need it the most first. Is there capacity for somebody who's crushing in math and just wants to even do better or how's that?
We're not sure. At this point, we probably do not have enough teaching sections to open up entirely. So we're focusing on the students generally in the level two classes who are yellows within one year of hitting the benchmark, five, thirty benchmark. So that's, that's what I'm targeting. Kind of want to have students that have the ability to get up there to that, to the level where.
Thank you.
Congratulations on this achievement. Great. And a quick question on the financial reality fair. I think that's a great lesson. So do all students do that or?
No.
Which student was?
Actually, we, in the past, it's been our, some are essential students, like essential geometry, essential, essential advanced algebra. But this year, this year I don't think the schedule worked out. But next year, when we two go, we're gonna open up and try to fill the bus.
Congratulations on all of the interest in math.
Yes, the SAT in particular is for you. When you talk about your, um, supplies as graph calculators, do you do online graphing or have you gone to the online ones? Are they?
Yes, well, we, there's physical ones because the physical is required for all the SAT testing and all the standardized SAT testing required with physical calculators. And we also use desktops, which is the online calculator for demonstrations in their main class.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Austin Mitchell, I'm the Science Department Coordinator. So our Science Department goals all align to strategic goal number one as well, which is about skills and dispositions, making students college and career-ready, built-in learning opportunities. So the goals I have listed here, um, show variation, but they all kind of align with that strategic plan goal. So we want to help our students feel perseverance, especially when it comes to problem-solving tasks. We want to continue to prepare them for science-based college and career opportunities. Um, we want to maintain course offerings and student choice. We offer a number of electives. There's only three required science credits for, um, RAM, but most students want to take an additional credit in their senior year. So we offer a lot of student choice and electives when it comes to that. Uh, we want to maintain college and career partnerships. So you may know that we run multiple blood drives every year. Um, that is run by a student class. Um, we also do field work with the D E T where students actually take data out in the field and provide it to that department. We're also involved in other things like a conservation program where students are raising salmon right now and they'll release them back into San Barbara, um, which is a state program. We provide career-based field trips, um, students have shadowing opportunities, we're able to go into local hospitals, um, that type of thing. And we bring in speakers as well to talk about different career opportunities related to science. So we want to be able to maintain that. Uh, we also want to be able to continue developing our NGSS-aligned assessments and assessments. If you haven't heard that before, NGSS stands for Next Generation Science Standards and those are the national science standards that were then adopted by the state of Connecticut. So we've been working on that for a number of years, but it, it's been a big overhaul. We're in a good place, but we want to continue to just align with that, especially as we start to receive data from the NGSS test, which was first given in two thousand and fifteen. So we just received those scores and are going to use those to continue to sort of align and, and, um, support students in developing those skills and content knowledge. Um, and of course, we want to support the PSAT and SAT goals through literacy and the use of math in our courses and maintain, um, compliance with science safety protocols in, uh, science classrooms and labs. So our budget requests are all related to those various goals. And we feel very, um, fortunate that over the last few years, we've been very much supported by the budget process. Um, so we've been able to do a lot and we're in a really good place. So most of this has to do with maintaining what we've been able to do. Um, so the first bullet point, maintenance and repairs current science equipment. So we want to be able to ensure that we can repair what we already have, so we don't have to continue to buy big equipment, you know, in years to come. Um, rather just maintain what we already have. We want to maintain funding for consumable materials so that each year, as students move from course to course, they all have the same opportunities. Um, we want to support teacher innovation, so teachers are continuously developing new lab opportunities or, um, activities, engineering activities. And we want to be able to support that as they come up with those new ideas and try, um, different things in the classroom. We want to maintain funding for those career partnerships and that usually looks like funded, um, buses for field trips. Um, we do have to replace a, a few pieces of broken equipment, although it's minor. Um, and also we wanted to try to provide a little bit more science-focused professional development for our teachers to make sure that that innovation is supported and NGSS, um, professional development is supported. Um, some of our successes are just other interesting things. Um, because of the support that we've received from the budget process over the last few years, we have many more students who are able to use technology. So we've had, um, especially in our physics classes, those students are able to collect a lot more data in, uh, real time where they're using probe wear and sort of college-level, um, equipment, which allows them to experience things that, uh, compare them better for those classes as they move forward into their college careers. We've been using what's called phenomenon-based instruction, so it's sort of teaching students through real-world phenomenon and using that to understand the science concepts rather than the other way around. A lot of teachers have made that shift. Um, we've been able to save instructional time, especially in chemistry. Prior to maybe a few years ago, those teachers had to share a lot of that equipment. And even within classrooms, students had to share a lot of equipment, which led to students waiting for things to be open or teachers being unable to collaborate because they would have to schedule labs at different times. And now they're able to collaborate, uh, a lot easier and really bounce ideas off each other. And students are all able to do the lab at the same time, uh, which is very nice. Um, we have more hands-on and engineering-based labs, especially in our freshman science course, um, which are, which is very closely aligned to the NGSS standards. Like I've said earlier, teachers are continuing to innovate. We have a number of experiential courses. One of them is medical careers and these students are the ones that are all certified in CPR and first aid. They're also the ones that run the blood drive. Um, they go out on shadowing opportunities, they go into local hospitals, into college labs. Um, and so that's, that's a very exciting course for them. So we want to continue to open some more experiential opportunities. We have a teacher that has applied to Jackson Laboratories, um, looking for a professional development opportunity that would help her, but also possibly introduce, um, the students to that lab. Uh, and that would be for our genetic students. Um, mentioned the blood drive, the career shadowing experiences. Our, we have a number of courses that offer college credit and some of those courses are currently MCC credit, but they'll be shifted to UConn and Eastern Connecticut State University. Um, and then we also bring in a number of professionals to talk to our students about their careers in a number of the courses, mostly the junior and senior courses. So we like to offer, you know, innovative and experiential kind of learning opportunities, which goes back to that original goal. And we, we feel fortunate that over the last few years, we've really been supportive in doing that. So much of what we're looking for is really maintenance of those opportunities for students. Thank you.
I'll start with Billy.
Everything was good.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyway. I think Sam provided you an extra handout, so.
And I'm the CTE department coordinator. Um, there's been a lot of change over the past year at CTE and next year we continue forward even more change. So I just want to say at this time, thank you for supporting the changes we took through this process. Um, I also want to thank the administration because they have been extremely helpful and supportive as we work through this change and encouraging, um, through it. We are effectively, um, tied to the district's strategic plan for goal number one. Um, as we offer innovative hands-on experiences for students, competitive programming for students, and the opportunity for students to, um, explore different pathways that they might be interested in going into. Strategies that we utilize, um, in, oops, sorry. That's okay. Strategies that we utilize in order to implement this programming. Starting off with competitive variety, we want to make sure that the programming that we are offering is what industry is asking for. So we reach out to a lot of, um, partners and I get feedback from the Department of Labor, industry professionals, um, student interest and, um, just state and policymakers that are working around this area. We offer innovative learning tools for competitive success. In CTE, it is extremely important that you are offering students the opportunity to work with innovative technology and equipment in order to make sure that we are aligned with what industry is asking us to do. We really talk to a lot of higher education institutions and have a lot of collaboration around that, as well as with employers and industry to make sure that what our students are gaining access to and are getting trained on is what they need to have in order to become competitive in the workforce and college and career-ready. And, um, lastly, we really strive to focus to make sure that our students are college and career-ready. We are aligned with Advanced CTE, which is a national organization that provides a framework, um, that the state has adopted. They provide students with academic and technical skills and the knowledge and training necessary to become exposed to and succeed in making decisions about future careers while becoming lifelong learners. I go to Advanced CTE whenever I really need some guidance or any sort of push in order to make sure that our clusters, our program areas and our pathways are aligned with Advanced CTE as well as the State Department of Education, because that's who they utilize and have adapted. I'm sorry, one more thing on that last slide. So thank you. Um, this year, the department has, um, focused on ethical decision-making for our department goal. And that was a component that was brought into us from the State Department of Education in conjunction with MBA research and the Daniel's Ethics Fund. And we've implemented, um, decision-making, um, around ethics and integrity inter-curricular this year, um, in two different CTE courses. Thank you, Pat. In terms of our budget breakdowns, I've given you a couple of, um, different pieces to take a look at. The pie chart represents by program area, so what we're asking for for next year. The Department of Labor has given us some feedback in terms of labor trends that moving forward, the biggest growth is, are going to be around business, information technology, manufacturing, engineering, and health sciences. So that's where we keep, continue to focus to make sure that we are investing into the right places. On the other side, the budget breakdown kind of, um, is more of a broad view. In order just to maintain our programs, we're looking at about sixty-six percent, um, component of our budget. Improvement costs are coming in at around thirty-four and a half percent. I do want to, um, connect over to that construction pie piece. That, the twelve-seven underneath the improvement cost, that's what that cost is. But that small red circle up to the top right, that's a Perkins supplemental grant that we're actually, I'm actually writing right now that we're gonna try and go for. And so that grant money, we'll find out.
And so that grant money, we'll find out if we receive in April. That pie piece might be able to be a little bit smaller if we do receive that funding prior to the end of this school year. In the top right-hand corner, you'll see some outside support that we receive. Every year, we do get Perkins funding, which is not guaranteed, but traditionally, it's guaranteed. So we are looking at getting that again next year. The Eastern Workforce Investment Board is extremely helpful in one of, as one of our partners, and they continue to really support us around the manufacturing program and have made themselves readily available if we do need anything in the future. We have some small employers who have just made some donations to us as well. That's located up in the top right. Next year, we're looking at a potential of fourteen to sixteen courses in CTE that award college credit. It's potential because we have a couple of articulations in process right now and aren't really sure which school is going to make them up for it right now.
You don't want to do world language.
Yeah. Just some other highlighting areas as we move and look forward. I do want to draw your attention in your packet. There's a CTE course sheet that I've given you. It's outlining all of the changes that are coming to the department for next year. On the left-hand side, I've listed all those changes. And on the right-hand side, the green courses are our current courses, and those designated in orange are the changes coming. And those with the asterisk are the ones that get college credit, just so that you can have a understanding of the variety of program, programming that we do offer. As I stated before, we're looking at fourteen to sixteen courses that have college credit. We've started some UConn collaboration with our business department and some professors from UConn around interpersonal communication. We live in such a digital era right now and digital age for these students, and ensuring and making sure that students can communicate digitally, appropriately, and professionally is a real strong need in workforce development right now and a goal for the State Department. We're offering next year a new robotics class. That's due to the budget money that we received last year to fix the robotic arm, so now we can implement the course. Middle school, we did a lot of change with curriculum and even the actual room from Capital. And the programming down in the middle school has been running really well, and the students are having a good time with the new equipment and technology that they're able to utilize. A couple of changes into the business area and the IT department. The IT area, currently, we have two courses that we're looking at really transforming the curriculum of it and moving towards an IT fundamentals course and a software applications course. The IT fundamentals course will actually allow students to run a help desk for students and staff, so students can bring their Chromebooks up to other students who are in the course, and they're getting work experience while they're fixing computers, and then the students, our student bodies benefiting from that as well. We've partnered with the IT department at the school and have conversations with them around this and around the communication for it. Coming forward down the pipe, Perkins is really going to have a strong requirement for work experience, so this is another way that we can just make sure that we're fulfilling that. And in addition, we're going to offer a software applications course. That course is built around Microsoft. I talk to employers every day in the Department of Labor quite frequently, and Microsoft is relied in the business world. So we are offering a course in order to really allow students to gain access into some skills and knowledge around that Microsoft component and move forward out of high school. Both of those courses are right now in conversations for college credit. The two new business courses, we're looking at a business communications course. That's going to be given college credit from Eastern Connecticut State University and has already been approved. That course is solely focusing around essentials, skills, soft skills for students in communicating effectively, appropriately, and respectfully in the workforce. Resume writing, interviewing skills, really prepping to step out of high school, either in college or career. And sports and entertainment marketing. That's just going to be a fun class, and we already have a whole bunch of kids who are already interested in it, and it hasn't even opened up where they can choose classes yet. So we've got a lot of feedback already on them. This year, the pipeline for manufacturing continues to be a success. We have two sections instead of one because we had last year. We are growing. We have had the first half of the year, students have really been engaged and hands-on in a lot of their theory work. The second half of the year, half of the year, we're really starting to bring in employers. We've brought Electric Boat in already. They've spoken to them, two small manufacturing facilities. The Eastern Workforce Investment Board has come in, working on resumes with them next week. We're getting ready for some mock interviewing skills. And the springtime, we really push a lot of employer engagement for them. They have interviews themselves so that we can get them ready to be placed into employment if they so choose upon graduation. We are also looking at a collaboration with East Hampton High School. East Hampton High School doesn't have the resources to offer a program like that. They are interested in sending students to our building, and Dr. Law and their superintendent have worked out the logistics of that process. So next year, we are looking, looking at piloting that for the year, and East Hampton seniors will come over at the end of the day and take our manufacturing course and get credit for it as well. They'll still be East Hampton High School students, and will just leave their school a little bit early to come and finish their day with us. I also want to mention that last year's graduating group, we had seven students interested in getting a job in manufacturing. All seven of them received offers from employers. Five of them accepted the offers, and I really, and they had multiple offers, but I, you know, I have to say that one of them got an offer at Pratt Whitney. He graduated on Friday, started on Monday, taking seventy thousand dollars. We have over thirty partnerships with industry, collegiate leaders, elementary schools, and that list is also included in your packet. There are thirty on that list, but we continue to have a lot of conversations and a lot of employers and people of the community calling us and asking us how they can be involved in this program. I just want to read a couple of highlights that my CTE teachers have given to me and asked me to share with you. It's just a snapshot of what CTE looks like right now in Region Eight. Engineering courses are now honors-level credit. We've polled a bunch of high schools around us, and a lot of them offer honors credit for those courses, except for our intro class. We currently have the highest enrollment in early childhood education, too, since the program began. Preparing students, we are preparing students for EMT exams while they serve our communities in public service. Hebron Fire has created special shifts just for the nine students who join their department from our EMT course. The first Hebron kids did their shift this past weekend. One Mongrove student is also taking calls with her department, and an Andover student is going to Andover Fire Department drills. The students have formed a new EMS club to support their activities, and the Lions Club just donated money to help the entire class attend the state EMS conference in May. The EMT program continues to enjoy the logistical support and supplies from local fire departments and towns. Cert students are also being trained in stoppage. Entrepreneurship business students are creating brands, products, and businesses, marketing and selling their products, gaining profits and investments, and then at the end of the semester, liquidating their assets of their company while paying back investors and themselves plus dividends. The nineteen-twenty entrepreneurship program provided a unique, successful learning environment, empowering students in the management and operations of practical and hands-on business ventures. I'm sure everyone has heard of Brett Ball Brands. Have them check it out. The manufacturing pipeline program is proving successful as we're providing the same training to our seniors that the state is administering to adults in the state program. Students and the school districts are receiving support from many employers and organizations to place these students upon graduation in high-skill, high-demand, high-wage jobs that are needed in our state. That's just a snapshot. There's obviously a whole lot more going on in CTE as well. The only other thing I would like to mention is that next year, we are also looking to offer an in-class personal finance course. Right now, it is offered only online, and so we're hoping that the in-class option is going to give a lot more students the opportunity to come into this course, as many of our young people are lacking those skills, even some of our adult people are lacking those skills as well. The last handout in your packet, which is in the slide, is built around architecture and construction. We're looking at moving into a direction of architecture and construction that's a construction-management pathway. We've had many, many conversations and collaboration around this program area and around what it should look like in the future. And the proposal, the proposal is on the back page of that. I have on the first page given you all of the data and information that I've been able to collect from surrounding school districts and the Department of Labor. The second page of the updated budget in terms of what's needed in the program. There are not a lot of needs that we have in order to continue this, the facilities as it is. The biggest need is a new soft stuff, which will just ensure safety for our students in utilizing that. In addition, our desk collector is working just fine. However, some additional components to that, a little bit more support for it, will allow for it to work more effectively in that room. On the last page, I have given you the proposals for the course names. We're looking at changing the course names to really align with what industry vocabulary is right now, and that was driven from Advanced CTE as well, which is that national framework that the state has adopted. The, the last change is the focus or the kind of conversation that's around that cabinetry course. We're looking at moving in that direction of construction management, facilities management, green and sustainable energy. We're not really sure what that looks like yet. I have a lot of conversations going on right now with Capital Community College, who awards college credit for this program. So we really want to make sure whatever direction we do move in, we're moving in the right direction to get the most for our students. We're looking at pulling in OSHA thirty, which is an industry-recognized credential that the State Department of Education recognizes, which will actually give Region Eight bonus points in their report card if we do offer something of that sort. No questions?
You're doing very important work clearly. I just want to say how much I appreciate the applications part. I'm in higher ed, and I taught in applications class. I can't say how many arguments I had with college students who think, oh, I'm going to mackintosh when I get to industry. No, you're not. So I think that's a moving one in direction. Anyway, I just applaud you for the effort.
I second that sentiment that the course offerings cover a wide base of subject material and also real application material. So, you know, the clearly, you know, and seeing not knowing kind of all the analysis is really very strong for the kids.
I just want to add one more thing. Connecticut Magazine, the last month of this month pointing out, I think it was Connecticut magazine, eight thousand vacant jobs in manufacturing. So it's definitely a gap.
There've been quite a few articles. One was in the Norwich Bulletin, Hartford Current, and I can't remember the other one, but E with our workforce investment partner, they used to send them to us. That Electric Boat just got a couple of new nuclear submarine contracts, and they are having a huge turnover of retirement as well. They're looking to sell, I believe it is ten thousand jobs over the next eight years, is what they just told us at the last meeting. So headed in the right direction.
Good evening. Thank you for having me present tonight. So world language, there are three languages we currently offer: French, Spanish, which is what I teach, and Latin. So our ultimate goal is obviously to give these students a good base in grammar, and in writing and speaking, but also use that and be able to apply it in a variety of ways, variety of disciplines is what we're looking at. So it could be business, social service, whatever it is, see what we can do, and also connect that with culture. So some of what we're looking at tonight is to do that. It's an ever-growing world, and yes, there are more translators, machines that can do things, but you still need that human touch, especially for cultural purposes. So that's what we're looking at. One of the things we do want to do is to incorporate culture because it is so different from country to country, even like here in the US. I mean, if you go to different parts, you know, Mexico is going to be different from Guatemala, which is going to be different from Chile. So they may speak the same language, but they clearly have different histories, different literature, different things that we're looking at. And these are one of the roles that we can play. And with the power of the internet, accessing those things, we can really help to build and answer skills. Although what we really also do not want to forget is to give them a strong foundation so when they go out, you are able to communicate in a clearly organized and coherent way, similar to what we want a graduate to have in, in English. So you don't have to be perfect, but the better you are, the more technique you are, the more practice that you have and confidence, the better you will come across, just as with anything else here. So we are using a lot of what we need with technology and other things to accomplish our goals here of one and two, as, as I had said. And it is a continuous process. It's not something that you just take a year of and you're good. Language is never going process, just like with English and other things. That is continually grown. So you want to give them that confidence and access to things to really help out. Latin is a little different because it is not a spoken language, but we want to use that to teach about the literature and the culture and the history, and also use that knowledge to be able to apply it across various disciplines in science, medicine, law, and even the English language itself, whether it's for SAT preparation or going into different areas. So it will give you a strong foundation there, which is what we are looking at. For a budget request, so I have said that we really want authentic videos that we can get access to, but we also want textbooks which currently aren't dated. Why is that? It's a hybrid approach. We don't want our teachers to just go out and try to have to find everything out there, which is extremely exhausting and time-consuming. What we want is a basis that is updated, that has access to some of these things, and then using the textbook, but also other things, bridge that gap. So we have a combination of things. As you can see here for French, circa two thousand four was the last time we had it. So it's been about sixteen years, and we're just looking to replace some of the things that have culture from the nineties, which the world has changed tremendously in Spain, English here, et cetera, et cetera. With these textbooks, we will keep them for a variety of years, so it is an investment. It is things that we can use for the traditional approach to help certain students, but also have authentic videos and cultural connections that can be used. So that's, that's what we really like. We're trying to hit all areas of students and how they learn. So the textbook is one place in addition to the resources that we can continually use to collaborate with other teachers that we can implement in the classroom from other areas. So that's where we're at right now. The Latin books, one of the things we really want to do is to update them to incorporate how women played an impact in the role. Currently at the time, it's male-dominated for what they have. So these books, which came out fairly recently, I'm sorry, I can't give you an accurate guess, but we want to incorporate other roles, which is what we also want in increasingly, you know, interconnected world. So their role, their place in what they have for the valley. For Spanish, there is an online textbook that we can use that, again, just has access to things. It's, it's another area that we can use. So we're not spending all our time trying to find one thing, but we have one thing here, and we can build it and really get better preparation for what we need to do. And the department is currently in a process going towards, they call them integrated performance assessments or IPAs. What is this? This is a way of assessing students with real-world, real-world practical ways to see how they can use the language. So it incorporates interpersonal, which is speaking with other students, presentational, which is taking a product and something that you can demonstrate for a crowd, like we are doing tonight. And then it's called the interpretive, which can come in the area of watching a video or doing a reading and using authentic materials to really see what the students can use. So this is more towards a practical application and use of the language, and it's something that is happening at the national level with the standards and also with lots of schools around the state. So there are consultants, specifically one that I know of right now that... So there are consultants, specifically one that I know of right now that, uh, is very cost effective, but we can Skype or Zoom with them and she can give us input, uh, on a variety of things. Designing things, finding resources, whatever the department needs. So that's really what we're looking at this evening. Other budget requests are for the honor society. So each year we have certain students who make a certain grade and need to go into the honor, uh, honor societies. So there are membership fees, uh, for RAM, which are not very high. We still have to do it to make sure that it's, 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 uh, official. And then there is a very small fee for the students if they make it in. Online content and authentic resources. I told you, one of the reasons why we want to purchase it, so it can be age appropriate and content appropriate. There's a lot out there that you could find for free, but there's a lot of garbage. So what you want to do is try to find a combination of things. And sometimes when we pay a fee as a department, which usually isn't that much, it is very cost effective, uh, we can use those resources. And those resources, resources use native speakers that are geared towards what we need to in a variety of categories. So they can be used from levels one to five, depending upon the topic and what you'd like and, and, uh, areas of difficulty. So again, cultural supplies, uh, some of the things that we do, I'm sorry, could you go ahead? Here, we do take trips. So Quebec and France goes every other year. Italy can go every two to three years, depending upon, uh, the people who want to go and the desire. And then the Spanish exchange is back. So Italy go last year, but this year, as a matter of fact, they're in Spain right now. So they're probably doing something fun, but that's great. So dreamer teachers are there now. They are in coastal Spain. I don't know what they're doing, but when you're in Spain, you probably have fun on a trip, right? So good for them. We still, we still offer the six credits in language, literature from the UConn. It's the ECE, early college experience, and also if students would like to, it's also an option to take the AP. So we offer both, what students would like. French Bowl champions. So what they need to do is each year, talking about UConn, uh, the ECE or early college experience, all of the programs go to UConn in November and they compete. So during the day, it's a, it's a very intense, intense competition in French. They have language classes and they have competitions for schools all across the state that, that obviously teach French and it tests their, their language skills and their historical knowledge and culture and literature. And this year we, we took home the trophy. I should say the French department, I don't speak French, you don't want them to speak French, but they did take it home and they were very happy. And it's, it's, it's a very fun day for them. It's very competitive and it's very hard to win. So this is the second time in five years that they've won the trophy. Kudos to them, what they're doing and their success. Thank you very much.
Just a quick question regarding the Italy trip. Is there any training in Italian, since you don't offer Italian or?
It is through the Latin program. So no, there is not, but, uh, the connection is with the Roman culture and what they learn.
Is there any financial support for people who can't afford to do this, or do you have any type of question?
Uh, I'm sorry, I do not know that. Dr. Law, is there any financial support for people who cannot go on the trips, the Spanish exchange or any other field trips?
We don't tend to have financial support for that. I know Scott can.
Yeah, no, we, we, we don't offer financial support for that type of trip. That's, um, optional. If, if we did provide it, we, I think find ourselves in a position where we'd be getting requests from multitude of students who would love to be able to do that. Each of the trips though does a number of fundraising activities to minimize the costs or to reduce the costs.
Are there any, as the department reviews the current state of what you have with languages, is there any thoughts or discussion on expanding to other global languages? Specifically like Chinese and Arabic languages. You guys do an amazing job. I have two folks that I feed that are a product of your Spanish and got all kinds of credits at UConn, but is that part of discussions at all?
May I answer that or?
Absolutely.
Yes, there are. I wasn't sure if I could answer it, which is why I left here. Twenty twenty-one, nineteen twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two.
So twenty-one, twenty-two.
American Sign Language will be offered. That was a process of what we worked on as a department of surveying the parents and surveying students and coming up with, uh, data as to what is the best language we could offer according to what the community says. So it's not just something randomly picked. There's a lot of work that was done to come up with the necessary data.
And Scott, to expand on that, as part of the world language review this year, and I think it's been shared with the board a couple of times, um, definitely a program. The, this, this, the review has talked about wanting to definitely start American Sign Language in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, as well as looking at other opportunities for other languages. The parent survey that we did, as Andrew just talked about, as well as really working with the department, have, um, prioritized a few other languages as well as looking at other languages through communication, like the language of engineering or the language of medical sciences, which some of our, our colleges are starting to create language programs like that. So all of those have been looked at and will continue over the next year for us to refine and work with the department as to what we want to offer and how would we offer those.
And the next one, just a curiosity, you mentioned the levels one through five, are those the same as the Department of Defense or the State Department levels one through five? That's how they rate, you know, five being native and one being super basic.
No, so those are, are years, um, those are not imperfections. It's, it's, it's not.
Thanks.
When, yes, when you're making a determination about what languages you said you'd survey the community, do you also include, I can remember when they cut Spanish here in, in Marlborough Elementary School. And people were really angry about it because they knew they were going to be behind or you're going to go in the RAM and they'd be behind because they were missing out on opportunities. And several people from industry came and made the point that they need speakers of different languages. So was that part of the decision-making and determining what languages to include? Was that a data point, just sort of what the industry says we need?
We absolutely have been looking at industry. Um, so even talking with the, with Sam Schattle about just in general, what are languages out there? We've worked, part of the program review had us working with elementary schools to look at how do we provide continuum? Cause we obviously have, we have students K through twelve. We want to make sure that we have some alignment there. Um, as well as looking at just general, um, research and information from current industry. So all of those have taken part in and are in the program review, different resources that we did use. And that we'll use those again as we try to hone down what are the other languages besides American Sign Language that we will be having moving forward.
Thank you.
My name is Delphish and I'm here representing art and music. I'd like to start by thanking you for your continued support of the art and music programs at Ram High School. You've allowed us over the years to develop an outstanding program there. Our budget requests look at fully maintaining, uh, the programs that are available there. Um, so again, maintaining that same excellence in the art and music programs that you have out there, to have the same opportunities for our students to go to education, to participate in competitions. It's really important for them to be able to do that both locally and mutually and for some of our students also nationally. Um, we also, as a department, want to make sure that we're making connections through the arts we're using to the community and making sure that it's not just what we do in our classrooms every day, that this is part of our students' lives. And again, part of the community as they go to different things, bringing us really like talent and all the more of the praise. As a department, we think it's really important for them to develop a K twelve art, music program. The students who are taking band of art at the elementary schools are the same students who are long to be taking at high schools. So having that connection with those students as they come up through the programs is really important for us. This has been enhanced at the middle school, high school by having teachers move between the two buildings in both music and art. Um, and this year also we've experienced a little extra time that we've been able to meet with the K, um, the elementary school teachers to help develop that program, particularly for the music teachers. They've been able to participate in workshops this year, Spotify music boosters, which has allowed them to align their programs, but also to work collaboratively and to build connections with each other, which helps to build connections for our students. Um, our budget requests, um, in general, maintain our programming. There's no big jumps in anything. Some of the bus costs are shifting slightly because of the raised fees, but we also, the Berkeley Jazz Festival is no longer a portal program and that was expensive bus for us. So we actually see a drop in high school classroom increases in this school. We have a few additional things that we're asking this year, but they still don't make our budget be anything more than what we asked in the past. We just generally make them safe. So for art requesting slave, we currently borrow Albers' slave wars for our Evening of the Arts that we have. This is our fifth year, I think, going into Evening of the Arts. Um, and it's, I think, the winter of the night, it's a fabulous celebration of our students. The boards that they have here are fairly old and I come collecting the money every year bringing back. So we're requesting that we have assistance if that program is here to stay, that we have, we invest in the system installed. Um, it's very lightweight, it's very compact. Um, we'd be able to use it at high school and the middle school for the coffee house. And we'd also be able to use them for the Great Parent Night and other things throughout the building if it realized quite a lot. In the jewelry class, we're requesting a precision bench chair to make the less, uh, less waste in the levels program because I'll be able to use the sheer to cut that. It will be less labor intensive for the teacher and will cut down on material waste. Um, in the past years, we've been building our digital cameras. This is a, just a maintaining of that. We won't be requesting two every year to replace for the wear and tear, but also to make sure that we're maintaining the technology and the equipment that the students are using. Music has a couple of requests. One is for microphones that they'd like to add to the technology program to expand the range of microphones they have the students to work with, but they'll also be able to use it with the live streaming, which is also a really nice part of the future of concerts. And they're asking, um, also for music stands. Music stands that we currently have at the high school were donated by Gilead sometime ago. They're in raw shape. So to replace them at the high school, ones from the high school that then go to middle school, um, and the ones in the middle school are even in raw shape from the ones in the high school. So they'll replace some of that this year, but the anticipation of those are remainder of those next year. We have an outstanding program. We have students recognized in arts and music, both mutually, locally and nationally. I'm very proud of our students and the work that they do also through the National Art Honor Society in Ram. They're very bold in arts, not just in the classroom, but going beyond the classroom to share that with the community.
It's a great program and I think very modest in terms of requests to the budget. So I'm trying to report it all.
Just, um, you produce one of the best topics. Well, I was just saying. That was, that's a really good, high level one.
Yep, yep. And for him to, um, get honorable mention at the, um, for the young arts. We've only ever had art student get the honorable mention at young arts. It is incredibly competitive. Um, so we're very proud of his, you know, recognition of the skill.
I'm just happy to get a music team to get in your place.
You use them when you come up.
No, great work. Congratulations. Educator is using her own truck to go pick up the stands. Can the wood shop build the, uh, the day build? Could that be a project?
Really lightweight, but it's where they're, they're, and they're, because Evening of the Arts, I, it takes me four or five days to put up the work for the show. And because they're lightweight and stackable, I can stack them on each other in the gallery, in the space, um, which we would be able to do this much better. It's always lightweight.
I want to, uh, take a moment and thank all the department coordinators for being here and for the hard work that you do with your departments and with the faculty and pooling together. The budget first of all, but just day to day, um, being leaders within the building. So thank you very much for, for being here tonight. We have a little bit longer to go tonight. So, um, so yes, thanks. If, if, if you want to go, now would be a really good time while I'm changing presentations. Nobody will notice, believe me, but thank you. Then during the week, the first one was a question around the life expectancy of the underground storage tanks. We tried several different, um, resources to try to get an answer on this and ended up actually with, um, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers providing us with their information or information from that group, from the contractors, that, that was who they turned to as far as providing information around these large concrete underground tanks. And the life expectancy is, is long on these tanks. And especially because they're just holding water, there isn't necessarily a lot of, um, deterioration that is going to happen. One of the reasons though, we have to do the inspection every five years is to put eyes on it, just to make sure that things are still okay. So it is through that inspection process that we make sure that if anything does seem to be an issue, we would notice that then and hopefully take care of small, minor issues before they became major ones. But we are going to add this to the very long-term planning on the capital list, just to make sure it is, is one of those things that we have in the back of our mind that if, if there's any type of a long-term plan that needs to happen, it's on there to be looked at. Does that question? Do I want me to go through all of them and then if there's any follow-up questions? Um, the next question was around cost savings related to the gas conversion. And we tried to take a look at what were our fuel oil costs in the past versus the actual natural gas costs that, um, and those were calculated at the top. And so you can see at least the difference between the fifteen, sixteen and the eighteen, nineteen. Those were the, 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 um, costs we had on record at that point, as well as the natural gas conversion costs that are down at the bottom. So the total cost that we had to pay the town of Hebron was the three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. We did that over a four-year period and this is our last year on that payment. Um, the career pathways, which you heard a little bit more about tonight, or they were referenced tonight. I did put those in your Friday update as well as they are on the website. When you click the data button, there's a, um, a link to those on the website as well. So you can take a look at the most up-to-date career pathways that the district has pulled together. There was a question and the next two kind of go together around projected enrollment versus actual enrollment, the NASDAQ numbers versus the actual numbers. There was a specific question around specifically two, eighteen, nineteen and nineteen, twenty. And so those are the differences between what they projected the year prior, NASDAQ projected the year prior and what the actual were. This is tiny, obviously, but it is in the budget book as well as on the slides that I presented to you. This question had a couple, two different, um, questions in it. One was around the actual total number of students for this year's budget book. And what we had done, that final page that shows the levy breakouts. When we first published that on January twenty-seventh, the numbers for enrollment numbers were from the previous year. We hadn't rolled them over. So there was an error on that budget sheet that is corrected at this point. So the correct number is on the budget sheet at this point. The second question, so the fourteen, thirteen is the correct number. The second question was around a more long-term look at the NASDAQ versus the actual numbers. And you can see that there's, there are fluctuations all over the place with the projections. Um, some years are closer than others. Uh, that's kind of what projections do. NASDAQ has a formula and a process that they use and it is something that at least, um, is consistent information that we can take a look at. And it is, it's been relatively accurate within it. I would say accurate enough to help us to be able to look at, yes, there are going to be declines or there are increases in a what timeframe and looking toward the future. But we certainly look at our own numbers as well. There was another question around the, the changes in, this is back in the eighteen, nineteen, or excuse me, the nineteen, twenty budget book around the actual cost for pupil services. And yes, when we first started in January of two thousand and nineteen and February of two thousand and nineteen, the total cost for special education budget was the six point seven million dollars, almost six point eight. But during the budget process, we were able to reduce that number based on, as you can see, purchased professional services out of district transportation, private tuition and summer school tuition. Those costs all changed based on PPTs. So when we know that that is changing, we're going to change it in the budget book. Again, we try to budget what we know and the best information we have. So we did make those changes at that time last year. Another question that was asked was around the per pupil expenditures. We do not calculate per pupil expenditures. The state does that. They have a formula for that. The parts to the formula are explained and defined in the back of the large budget book that I create for you in the glossary. And the budget numbers that we, that I used in the budget book on January twenty-seventh were the most recent ones at the time that were out. And they were through two thousand and nineteen. The most up-to-date one, the literally was just published on January twenty-fourth of this year by the state. So I have not used those per pupil expenditure numbers. And I can't explain why some, why some numbers have gone up and some numbers haven't, other than the fact that it's based on the formula that the state uses around attendance. Per pupil expenditures are calculated by certain fixed costs that are part of the formula that is explained in the back of the budget book. So those were the actual questions from board members, just as far as what you now have as your current budget. These are the items that were added or deleted out of, or reduced out of the budget since our last meeting. We added in the one point oh woods teacher plus the program expenses. We removed the pay for participation. I am increasing the high school nurse administrative assistant hours from three and a half to five hours. It was recommended last year that we reduce it by a half to halftime for that position by the nurse. We're finding this year with the new people in the position, that they would really recommend that it be, it doesn't have to be a full day, but they would recommend five hours. So we are going to bump that up to five hours. The increased social security cost that comes from the increasing of those hours. And then the removal of a couple of athletic stipends. The A D asked that stipends for positions that we pay staff for, he would really like to assume those as part of his responsibility. He feels this is a full-time A D. These are things that he should be overseeing. So we have removed those from the budget as well. That then puts us to the current budget number. The current operating budget is, so the, it is your gross expenses minus your revenues. What we would be asking in referendum would be thirty million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, which is a four point oh one percent increase in operating. The capital budget is still at four hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars, which is a decrease of thirteen percent. If you combine those two budgets together, it is an overall budget increase of three point seven one percent. Do you have any questions?
I have a question as well, as I understand. On that page, it says anticipation fees and it says one sixty-four, two thirty. So why does that say one sixty-four, two thirty? And then when we removed it, it says one forty.
So I'm not.
So on that page right there.
Right, where it says participation fee is one sixty-four, two thirty.
Yep.
Then it, there's nothing in the blank space. So where we are for the projected twenty twenty-three, the difference is a reduction of one sixty-four, two thirty, or a hundred percent.
So, yeah, but my question is, it's one sixty-four, but here on the page before that, it says it's one forty. So if you go back with the slide, there it says one forty.
Because, oh, so that was the anticipated number, the proposed number. When you look at your budget book from, not the most recent one, but if you take a look at the January twenty-seventh budget book, our projected number for this year was one hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. We are projecting less in our participation fees than the nineteen, twenty budget. So we, when you, we took out the projection, now there's nothing there. So you're comparing nineteen, twenty to twenty, twenty-one. So the one sixty-four, two thirty from nineteen, twenty is compared to nothing in twenty, twenty-one, which is a reduction of one sixty-four. And the overall scheme comparing year to year and comparing to what we originally forecasted for this year, it's a reduction of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Thank you.
All right, so moving on to discussion and possible action regarding two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget transfers from May into June two thousand nineteen. So can we just put a motion on the table so we can open it up for discussion?
Make a motion to it.
The transfers from May, June, two thousand nineteen. All right, discussion. In the, I don't know. We're on page five for school-wide voting ops lecture. It's about the one, two, three, four, five, sixth item down on the top. There's a thirty-eight thousand dollar higher, actual higher than anticipated amount on there. Speaking of, and I was wondering if that's typical or if there was any looking into why that was tied down higher.
So the transfers were all based for projects and for other things that came up from the savings that were realized at that point in time. So we tried to move some items forward that we tried to let that kind of utilize the money. Do I remember what exactly that project led off the top of my head?
Down. So there's a project.
Yes, it, it, it's a student generator. Just as soon as you left the light on or.
Correct.
That's right.
Any other discussion items? No, nothing? All right, so all those in favor? All right, so we're back to a couple of comments. Any more comments? All right, do you want to motion to the adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Everyone in favor?